Good afternoon, all, and I would like to call this meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to observe the senseless shooting again we have heard across the nation today for that family, those families and those loved ones. So we could just have a moment, please. Okay, thank you. Ms. Byron, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Ms. Hage?
Here.
Ms. Kinter? Madam Chair, the clerk certified for presence on the floor.
Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with equalty and justice for all.
Dr. Hornig, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to accept it, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Hornig.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're going to start this evening with Ms. Jamerson, who is here. And we have a overnight field trip request to Hampton for our TSA to go and compete. The costs, as well as the funding source, are mentioned, as well as the transportation that they are planning to take. And this is really a strong opportunity for our TSA to compete against other schools across the Commonwealth. And I believe there is also an itinerary for the event, again, down at the Hampton Coliseum. And we are seeking action at the next board meeting unless there are any qualms about this evening. And we'd be happy to move forward if you all are okay with that.
Absolutely. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this.
I'll make a motion to accept the presentation for the overnight field trip that happened.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That's a buck to you all. This evening also, I'm happy to have George Hinckley here in the audience, and he will come and present. Our relationship goes back to last year, before I was leaving Stafford County. George approached me about running the first annual Smart Community STEM Camp that was originally slated to be hosted at Quantico Marine Corps Base. And George ran into some logistical red tape with getting approval to fly drones on base. And so he was seeking an alternate location at a nearby location, and North Stafford High School fit the bill. And over the past couple of months, I have had George come in to present to our cabinet group. This afternoon, he was here and met with Ms. Jamerson, who's in the audience, as well as Captain Smith and Major LaCasse from the Sheriff's Office. And he's going to speak to you a little bit this morning about the goal that we're trying to achieve, which is bringing access and opportunities to students, in this case, in an after-school and summer camp format. We have also met with and broached the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia and Kate Lambert, their director, to involve them as well. And the information that he will present about our overall goal will benefit students at each level of our school division through the high school, where he will talk about the opportunity to go to a camp and become a trained mentor and then actually be hired on and paid to deliver and lead and basically be a paid intern to work with our own students here in Orange County at both the middle school and elementary school level. So this is really a wonderful opportunity to provide opportunity and access. And George, I will let you take it from here, and when you want Laura to advance, just signal her, and she'll slide it to the next slide.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hornig. Good evening. Any questions? No. Like Dr. Hornig said, this camp came about, the reason it's called Smart Community is a couple of things there. The Society of American Military Engineers is one of the sanctioning organizations, and they hold national camps across the country, roughly half a dozen, very civil engineering oriented. But as we all know, as things have changed with emerging technologies, that influx of wireless control in our houses and all that other, those things that are impacting what, how we operate resilience, from a resilience perspective, smart cities, smart bases. And then the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation, if you're not familiar with them. The Commonwealth of Virginia has a Virginia Smart Community Initiative. So we're starting with the dialogue between the two, DoD installations, smart communities, smart cities. And not surprisingly, when you address it from an emerging technologies perspective, the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the workforce are not fundamental, are not different, they're the same fundamentals, the same workforce. And that came up this morning in a meeting, when we talked about drones and law enforcement, military flies them for many of the same reasons. Next slide, please. So like Dr. Hornig alluded to, or stated specifically, we were heading to fly drones onboard the base. The SAME organization typically does those either on military installation or military facility. The DJI drone is a Chinese drone. They said, no way. So they went to bought it at Hurricane Base, US Base. And then they decided that the drone was just too much for them, and they said, sorry. Did that march, it turns out, with a really good friend, Dr. Hornig. North Stafford High School was really close to Quantico Base, so we can still say Quantico STEM Camp. So that's where we held it. Thank you again for being so generous. Full run of the facility, full run of the place for three days, and that was great. We had, again, Society of American Military Engineers and Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation, the two sanction, primary sanctioning organizations. But participation from local, state, federal law enforcement, to fly drones and support mission, as well as first responders. So we've had, alluded to earlier, we had your deputy chief, I guess, Captain, was here. And I believe he fled them as well in Orange County and some other first responders. So it maps well with what we already did in the group. A couple of our naval STEM stakeholder organizations that supported us, Navy, Naval Service Center of Auburn, and Marine Corps Systems Command at Quantico. And I remain in very close coordination with the Department of Navy STEM stakeholders. And they're excited to come and help to this region as well. We had 28 campers, I needed to manage it, my first STEM camp. So we were targeting 32, ended up with 28, well, 29 dropped the last day. About 20 throughout. We had two from inside inner DC, seven from East Shore of New Orleans, and the rest, we moved from throughout the Fredericksburg region, unfortunately, none from Orange County at that time. The simulation, we did, we developed the drones, we flew drones in sim flight simulation, laptop controlled software. And then we flew, you see the picture on the top left, that's the Skydio 2 drone. That's a California company, all US manufactured drone. They donated 10 of those drones to the camp. I still have them in my basement. They literally donated them, and they were over $2,000 a pop. I said, we're going to do this in King George with Y. How many need? I said, two more. They said, okay. Four more, three days later. And they are a partner for this initiative as well. So as we move forward, hopefully, they will be in the conversation as well for Orange County. The course, when you see the people, the two-by-four thing with the bucket, that's part of the National Standards Technology Drone Certification Course, that you have to fly in a time, certain time, go to get a score. We had a Top Gun competition, which was really cool. Top 14 flew against each other, and they were scored. We had a tie for second place by three people, and the Top Gun was the kid from Inner City, Inner City DC School. And he was in the Naval JRO. We did esports on the two shiny objects, were drones and esports. We did esports on the third day, you see that on the right. They had a very interesting number of different games. We did about four different games. They competed as teams, so we figured out who won, both from the drone competition and esports competition. We'll be doing both of those again this year, next slide. At the time of that camp, this nonprofit didn't exist. My relationship with Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation and the CTO was such that I turned to him again, one of the sanctioning organizations. And I suggested that we start a nonprofit, or I started a nonprofit, to operate, manage these camps. Because I didn't want to do it just every summer. I wanted to build a program that was deliberate and persistent throughout the year. So we did it. And the emerging technologies, future learning, and natural security are fundamental to why we're doing this. Again, the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation has the Virginia Smart Community Initiative. Testament for that is in Stafford. But that whole initiative is really about a lot of different living laboratories. And plus, and now this is the workforce of the future. Next slide. So this year, we will be holding the inaugural Virginia Smart Communities Camp. And it's going to be hosted at the University of Orange County. That is, it's the Virginia Smart Communities Camp, because the relationship is between Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation and the University of Orange County. They were gonna guarantee next year we could start, and it took them about five days to give us the thumbs up that they will host. So this will, beginning this year forward, it will be the Virginia Smart Communities Camp for this entire region. The overall agenda, again, we're going to do aviation drones, and we're adding space. Our relationship with Ohio State University, new Starlab program, we'll talk about that second. We will do esports again. UNW has a new program, UNW Esports, that will be launching in the fall of this year as a degree pursuit. We're going to add some human behavior performance analysis, try to keep kids away from the devices and back in. Working with people, a lot of work with the team. We'll do that in organizations at the camp. And some immersive learning, a lot of it is that anyway, in drone flight simulation, but we're going to add a little bit of that. Targeted 48 campers this year, 14 squads, if you will, 12, you know, retired room squads. Little groups of four each, if you will. And our target is the Fredericksburg region. So one of the main reasons we're here is to get some personal kids from Orange County. Next slide. This is about the workforce of the future. I don't say workforce development. It is, it's not, it's not open job replacements, and it's not a contract that the community calls to do training. This is about kids. This is about to adapt them, middle school, high school, and some down in the elementary school. This partnership is really formulated in the Fredericksburg region. I have a member random agreement, Y, I have area YMCA. And I have a very close relationship with Skydio. They just issued their, Skydio for All is actually now a program with that company. It didn't exist before STEM Camp last year, it does today. Just published their annual report, and our logo is in the report report on page 10, which really validates that they believe in what we're doing. Orange County is part of that purpose, is to get to where kids typically wouldn't see these drones. And not necessarily theirs, but they will do their drones so that we can educate and train the kids. But our studios is a company that provides the simulation software called Zephyr. And the CEO of that actually came out of George Mason University, Virginia Series Games Institute, that's where the company is incubated. He'll be coming back to Virginia this year. At the hand of area YMCA, and I talk about, it's really about the facilities and certified staff. So we're talking about putting capability there to get to the kids when they're out of school and after school. Skydio, again, I talked about them, sort of the Naval JRO developing curriculum, shows those in Orange County. So we're rolling that into the experiential activities of the drones as well. And then us program project management, and bring the technology and the subject matter expertise to you, schools, to YMCA's. I don't have to read this. It's fundamentally, it's about, one of our partnerships is with Joint Hypersonics Transition Office. That's a new office, and an office of Secretary of Defense, they are writing curriculum related to hypersonics, and they are giving it to K-12. So I'm a channel partner for them to bring it to you, in after-school programs and high school programs. And that's what truly see high middle schoolers doing. In Stafford, we fly either in simulation or actual flight on Wednesdays. Now on Tuesdays, Thursdays, they are working that experience with curriculum that's the hypersonic experience. And I've talked about the last two. Next slide. So for here, basically, it's a pull-out YMCA and plug-in Boys and Girls Club. As of this morning, I signed an MOA with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia, with Kate Lambert. We're ready to pull the program together here in Orange County, working with schools, working with Boys and Girls Clubs. Basically, same campus, I guess. So this was a proposal, just a proposed methodology. It's notional, how we might do it here. Proof of concept, late semester. I know you're going on spring break soon, and then in six weeks, I think you have for the rest of the semester. Not a lot of time. It's about what we did last year at high middle school. Just go in with some laptops and software, just see what the level of interest is in the middle school of the kids. And then we let them fly drones ready for Christmas. We probably do that right before they go on break. Kind of sets the tone for next time they come to that comeback. And now we're hitting the ground running, building the program in the spring semester. The after-school program for the YMCA's is their already existing Power Scholars Academy. In the mornings, they do the academic, adjust the academic challenges, issues. In the afternoon, they do enrichment activities. We're going to plug into the enrichment activities with emerging technologies, drones as an example. And then fall semester is when you probably can begin some more formal implementation in middle school. But I like the ecosystem we have sitting right here with the Boys and Girls Club, the middle school right across the park. It's really, I think it's an opportunity. And that, I think, was most of the conversation for something. Couple of other things. I've been, I was at Capital Technology University just a couple of weeks ago. They are literally a technology school, not much else there other than a place to sleep, go to labs. But it's really cool. NASA's sponsorship of a program they have. They would be interested in a relationship with the Orange County Public Schools, to include possibly building a small planetary, to do some of their own. Joint Hypersonics Transition Office, I already talked about it. I've met the curriculum for that, sharing with Dr. Hornig and his staff. Ohio State University is one that really gets my attention. I'm working with Dr. John Horat. He's leading with Starlab Project. Starlab Project is a new commercial, industry-based, low Earth orbit replacement for the International Space Station. A lot of opportunity there for jobs moving in the future, and the launch is 2028. So guess what? Sixth graders, it's about the right time when you begin. So they're going to begin helping, they will help us build out the curriculum to add space. VI PC, I talked a lot about. One of the conversations I had before coming here tonight was with Mr. Eri, the CTO. He would be interested in the conversation with the county and the schools. Pilot program for smart schools here in Orange County. A lot of the technologies he's working on, Virginia Smart Community Initiative, could be deployed in your schools for a number of viable reasons. To be done. If you're interested in that, I would be interested in the conversation. And from the law enforcement first responder perspective, the Public Safety Innovation Center didn't exist last spring. The gentleman who helped me with the drones program at the STEM Camp is now the director, retired deputy chief of York County. He's now the director of Public Safety Innovation Center for the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation. And I have met with Rob Han, Emergency National Services Council. Their interest is drones as a first responder, so now, dispatching a drone upon dispatch in a mobile truck. To get better insight into what's going on on the scene. I think the example we talked about today was fire pulling an IR sensor capable drone into the zone. What are the hot spots? What do we need to send?
Yeah, we were informed with the brush fire that happened last week. That's how they DM'd us, addressed it. They brought the drone back, flew it over to identify the hottest spots in the fire. And that's where they were able to deploy firefighters to address it. So this really creative ways that people are using drones.
And the workforce for drones is just going to explode, so we need to build it. This, the camps are really about exposing kids to opportunities. Maybe give them a moral reason to study certain topics and subjects. Plus, give them some sense of, I went to college in Missouri, and I was a Marine, so she'd get to show me. And that's a way to do it. Next slide. Little bit on VI PC, if you're not familiar. You heard of CIT, Center for Innovative Technology. VI PC is the former CIT. It was rebranded to align with legislation issued by the General Assembly three years ago that established the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority. In that language, it named the CIT as a nonprofit operating manager that is now VI PC. And I talked about the Virginia Smart Community Initiative. It is one of the strategic initiatives for VI PC. So you're in the game at the top with VI PC, working with David here. Why I have the N is, I'm just the liaison for D and D and federal agencies. I have two hats for VI PC, and this is the workforce of the future conversation. Any questions for me? We're about cultivating human capital. I want to work concurrently and complementary with the schools as their responsibility. If you figure out where to put it in the curriculum, it's not going on my order, but I'm there. This is about after-school, out of school, getting to the kids where they are.
I just got an observation. It's just another testament to have a Dr. Hornig at helm and connections with good folks like yourself. And thank you for coming out, and definitely, the drone industry is only going to get more needs, and it's a good service.
Thank you. It's a great opportunity. I'll come in and thank you for it.
Appreciate it. And the best thing, too, was when George came to me here, in both scenarios, in North Stafford and here. He is not selling anything. This is not something that we, it is about an opportunity. And we seek other sources of funding to get the technology, to pay the mentors. And it's an opportunity for our students in an after-school and in a summer programming format to have opportunity and access. And so that's what I found particularly refreshing, is this was not a, it's not a sales pitch. It's not an agreement that's tied to money, et cetera. Of course, there's costs associated with anything you want to do. But that was what I appreciated, George, is let's talk about a way that we can engage students and meet them where they are using some of the existing partnerships. You can bring expertise and people. We have access to the students, and your Boys and Girls Club has access. They have personnel that oversee students in an after-school and a summer programming venue. So that triad, so to speak, makes a lot of sense.
Dr. Hornig sort of answered my question, because I listened, all this sounds wonderful, but, you know, my question is going to be, what's the cost?
Well, as with anything, you need resources to do a lot of these things. But the drone costs in and of themselves are expensive, but they're going to give them to us. So there are costs associated. Here's a second example, is the software for the simulation. You have a lot of the assets, and I would put in a cost proposal to do it. You have the assets, the AVPCs we identified, that were in storage because of COVID. Those are things that can be used to deck. We can put software on those. You really start, and I negotiated the contract with Little Arms Studios to get the price point down on the software. And now they've committed to donating all the controllers. So I'll buy the software, you've got the hardware, and they're going to give us the controllers. That's a good deal.
More specifically, you talked about having 48 students. What's the cost per student?
Oh, for the camp. I'm sorry. The camp, the camp cost is 600 per student. But like Dr. Hornig said, we're, I don't want this, my goal is to not have to have a camper pay that cost. I'm going after money so that it's minimally a hundred dollar registration fee. They should have some skin in the game to come to the camp. It can't be, doesn't work well if it's free, it just doesn't. So at least a hundred bucks. If I can get enough money, I'll get it back at the end of this, show up, but you got to show up. So but right now, the way we're, the money we're going after to cover those costs is 600 a year.
I just wanted an idea, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
And so when we were meeting this afternoon, Jessica Sarver was in the room as well, who's our, Orange County, who's our STEM coordinator, among many other things. I know from, if you want to talk briefly, she's seeking some grant funding already.
Every year, we have a grant we write for urgent, and they, you know, every year we get funding from them. So we're going to ask them if they would allow us to use that grant for the purpose of paying for the kids' camps so that the kids can go at minimal cost to them. So we're hoping that they'll let us use that as our grant pitch.
If I may, I'm not sure if it was clear, those high school kids are critical because they are your, what we're doing at high middle school in Stafford is I am paying them as W9s to be their paid interns, to be the mentors for the middle school. They, they're familiar with all the software. They're familiar with the drones, because they attended our camp last year. So we're building a category of mentor partnerships. It's worked out better than I expected, it would, to be honest with you. High school kids were a little tentative at first in the middle schools, but after three or four sessions, it was like, oh, the brother and the sister. It really gets really worked out well.
Which is why Ms. Jamerson was here this afternoon to help us, because she, she is a drone pilot, number one. And she was already in the inner workings of building drone technology and pilots, et cetera, that is tied to this into her existing curriculum inside of her classes, inside of robotics. And so she was here to help guide us on identifying four or five students who were willing to commit. And again, part of it is, we would want, similar to our lab school idea, if we're going to, if we're going to help provide some funding and help expedite your process to become a teacher, we want you to come back here and teach in the region. Same thing here. We want to find our students who, one, have an interest in this, two, where you're comfortable having them in leadership capacity. Of course, they're going to be supervised either by school personnel or Boys and Girls Club folks, depending on the venue. But also ones who are willing to come back and provide that investment back to the younger students so we can provide that exposure and experience to them as well.
So the summer camps, how do you, obviously, you said that we were going through, Ms. Jamerson about picking four students?
We were, so the camp total is bringing 48, and so I was hoping to sneak by, maybe to get George to let us get five. But we were going to hope to get four to five high school students who could go to the camp. And then they come back, and they essentially become... And then they come back and they essentially become smart camp, right, they're trained, they're smart camp community employees, so to speak. And then they are part of our folks coming in. And we're also seeking, for instance, Mr. Rutter has interest and intrigue in airplanes. And this is why we brought in Major McCas, who has a personal interest in drones. And he's, he's looking for these type of opportunities. So we're not only seeking the, the high school students to be able to come back after going to the camp, but also other folks in the community who might have interest in this, who might be willing to volunteer their time as well to come in and engage with the younger students, the middle schoolers, and even upper elementary school kids, either after school, if we run our own type of after school club, or in the summer, when many of the students are with the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club can embed some of this work into their academic enrichment, what they do. And when George and I, we went and he met in Charlottesville with them, they have a gentleman on staff who also happens to be, who, whose title is STEM coordinator. He does something with.
STEM coordinator.
STEM coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club and has, has a personal interest and a hobby for drones and drone technology as well. So that wasn't planned, but happened to work very much in our favor.
I would also like to, if we would be able to get the opportunity to actually come see when the camp is, is starting in at least a day or so to see how.
Of course, of course.
We'd love to do that.
I'm happy to bring a few drones here and a little flight. If you're, if you're interested, if you got, if you got drone pilots, I have the drones.
Yes, we would love, we would love for you, absolutely, because I'm seeing the opportunities, yes.
Arrange something, give me a gymnasium, fly indoors, we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, George, appreciate it. All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'll invite Dr. Honig to come forward. And she will review our 2324 Perkins grant funding.
Yes, I'm, I'm coming before you this evening to ask for your approval to have these funds that we apply for every year. As you know, the Perkins funds are used to strengthen our students' knowledge and technical and employability skills in our CTV programs. So that would be for our middle and high school students. And the grant is around $93,000. And what I do is every year I, I put the bulk of the money towards equipment because as you know, these hands-on courses require a lot of different types of equipment. So the majority of that money goes towards that. A small portion goes also to our transition specialist, who is the SPED liaison for our students who are graduating and moving into the workforce. So we give some money to that. And then also a portion of the money goes for training teachers, sending them to the state conferences or other, other trainings that will help them be up to date on their skills as well because they're teaching a lot of classes that change rapidly. Any questions? If there are no questions, we're entertaining a motion to go ahead and approve this tonight.
Yes, I make a motion with the Paul Perkins and Carl Perkins for grant as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we will move from the money we are seeking to supplemental appropriations. And Mr. Honaker is here.
Gary. I guess you're going first with Perkins grant now. So what I'm asking for is supplemental appropriation of $20,930.36. Since this is additional funds above what was budgeted in the original. Any questions? Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable going ahead and approving this as well?
I make a motion, we approve the Perkins grant of $20,930.36 to our budget.
Thank you, can I have a second? Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, and we're happy to bring this forward. Doug, was I being a big leak that Mr. Arnold's been working tirelessly to get some resolution to the lingering Locust Grove Elementary School gym issue? This is tied to the water leak. That's a, not the best term to call it, water break that happened. And so we have received a few proposals. And we are asking for Miller Sports Construction. And we have discussed this with the appraiser and had no objection. And to have them come in and complete the flooring work. And you can see the scope of the work includes removing the bleachers and taking out the flooring that is still under there and replacing the entire gym so that all the seams and all the boards and all the floors match. Then we will have a seamless finish. And it also includes giving us back to the original with painting. And so it'll look like it was never an issue. And so we would appreciate the board's support. And Marshall, is there anything you need to add, Ben?
Uh, sir, I'm just here, if there's any questions, we are definitely putting measures in place so that this does not happen again. Not only it happened, but next door, this situation.
That's not like a little flood. I mean, that's a flood.
It was.
So with that.
I just have one question. And that is, you said you, we talked to our insurance adjuster. Do we expect our insurance to cover 100% of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do.
That's a good answer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make that recommendation or the motion for recommendation on awarding the contract to the little schools in some $151,350.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And last but not least, this evening, Marshall and I can both speak to this as well. As per the usual, East Orange Little League is seeking our permission to, to use three fields. One at the front of Locust Grove Middle School, when you come off of Flat Run Road, the front of the building. This is not, this is not the ones, of course, behind the building, as well as the fields behind the primary and elementary school. So they have renewed their commitment to maintain the fields, good stewardship, and they also have proven their insurance liability requirements. And they would like to extend the use of the fields from this July 1st through next June 30th.
This is all standard, nothing really changed in that.
That's right, ma'am. Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. How to entertain a motion, please?
I move to approve the renewal of the Locust Grove Hall Field Lease Agreement as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
I was going to say a few words. These fields, of course, are down in the Locust Grove area. And they're, they're behind the elementary school. This is a, this is land that we do not use at all. It was just grown up and these organizations came to us and asked if they could use it. And they've maintained, not only they maintained it, but they've built equipment there. And they've built, basically, behind the primary and elementary school, they basically built the fields. The one down at the middle school already existed, but the middle school has no use for that field at all. And the middle school was supposed to include extra fields that were above and beyond what the middle school could use, so the county could use them. So I, I strongly support these because the organization, the ones behind the elementary school and the primary school, you need to walk back there and see what they are. They're really nice fields and it's all done by this organization. So I'm a very strong supporter of this. Okay, I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
All right. Uh, you did second? Okay, you second, okay, just making sure. All, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That is all this evening for reports and recommendations.
Okay. While we have a view of next month's calendar, I mean, uh, agenda.
So for April, of course, spring break is the first week. So that moves our regular meeting to April 10th. And we also wanted to put out there that Dr. Horning is attending a conference, the 24th, 25th. Which conflicts with that? Traditionally, the conference that he's attending was the first week in May, which is why when the schedule was made, it would be mine in one way. In May, we had moved the meeting to the 8th, anticipating that this conference would be then. So I don't know if you want to adjust the 24th to the 1st, or, but I'll leave that to you guys to discuss.
Well, it is the 17th, right, to Monday.
That's certainly not true. We've done that before.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Just moving it to.
I will be here, I'll be away.
Okay. All right, so we'll just move the 24th to the 17th then.
Okay.
All right. And then.
I'll be honest, I don't know my schedule because it's at home, I don't carry it around with me. I believe I'm scheduled to be away on the 17th.
Uh, well, I think it looks like that we've pretty much taken care of, let's see, all the, the meeting, I mean, business of this month. So going into the first, well, I mean, the 10th, so, I mean, we could just move that work session to the 10th and then go from there and just have one meeting. Since we.
Combine the regular session and the work session.
Yeah, because since we can, you know, we've done pretty much all the work tonight, we approved everything that was on the agenda for, for the next meeting. So I just say just move that work session to combine and do whatever because.
That's fine with me.
So only having one, and we can either, I mean, leave it at the, the 10th. So no 17th and no 24th, so only one meeting.
And then, uh, just for the rest of May.
Thank you.
We will have, the 18th is the last day of school. There's a prep meeting on the 19th, graduation is on the 20th. And we'll have more details and things for you as that gets closer. And then there's a work session on the 22nd because the 29th is a hot day.
All right, sounds good. Any other question?
Sure.
Because this means we could maybe move to the 8th or the 1st.
Instead of the 8th?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That'll phase them closer together.
Sure, I mean, it's good with me.
Seemed like a reasonable suggestion. I think it works my schedule.
Okay, so just move that meeting to the, the first? Thank you. All right, and then looking at the agenda, we pretty much took care of everything on that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and obviously it will change as we advise. It would have been on the work session at the end.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, Mr. Jones, closed session certification, please.
Uh, pursuant to 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel and performance of a division employee is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then you got the motion line. All right. I'd like to tell this back to order and recertification, please.
Whereas the Orange County School Board is convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas 2.2-3712, D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in accordance with the Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed and made in such public business matters as were identified in the motion which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Aye.
Yeah.
So, uh, was it Mrs. Anderson?
I'm sorry, second.
That's okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the board certifies the vote as positive for that vote. No, no votes, and one member absent. The resolution is approved by a 4 to 0 vote.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Horning, disposition of personnel actions?
Yes, ma'am, we seek approval for the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Thank you, can we have a motion, please?
Thank you, motion that we approve the personnel presented to the school board during this closed session to include requirement, resignation, deployment, transfer, or termination and extra program [inaudible].
Okay, can we have a second? Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And there is no other business?
Uh, maybe I'll ask Laura to send us a calendar since we changed a couple of dates. That'd be great if you could do that.
With that being said, I will adjourn this meeting.